I need a flicker or even a spark to light the way back into your heart to feel you again. I always thought I had a way. I knew the perfect thing to say to make you feel everything you need to me. When it comes to loving you, I lose my way. Everything I thought I knew, I just can't say. And time is time again. I seem to lose my cool. I'm a fool when it comes to loving you.
We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who has come out into the meeting tonight that's in attendance and also those that are watching on G-10 television. We're going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jerry Bittner followed by the invocation given by our city attorney John Carter. Please rise.
Please join with me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we give thanks. We give thanks for this day and for all the blessings you so graciously bestow upon us. We give thanks for our city and for our citizens. We pray that each of us would strive to be of service one to another as we move through life. And that each of us especially would strive to be of service to those young folks, the military personnel who come through our city and move forward and go into harm's way. We pray for them tonight. We pray for their families. We pray for your protection over them. And as always, we pray for your guidance and your direction to be with our mayor and with our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, you all have a copy of tonight's agenda along with the consent items. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have approval of the minutes. This is for June 17, 2014 regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the June 17 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I have a couple of presentations to make tonight and I'll come down around front here. I'd like to ask Council liaison to the Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee, Ms. Angela Washington, to join me up front here. And also, I'd like to call forward Patrick Carroll, who's the committee chairman. The Jacksonville Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee recognizes activities that advance the city's clean and green goals. Each recognition focuses on areas that are identified by the Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee as work tasks for awareness and capacity building. This evening, a Star Award for Outstanding Business Appearance and a Star Award for Outstanding Residential Appearance will be presented. At this time, I would like to ask Tanya Humphrey, who's the general manager of Chick-fil-A on Western Boulevard Extension, if you'd come up and join us, please. Chick-fil-A, the company's landscaping offers a welcoming and attractive addition to the roadway over on Western Boulevard Extension and combines with the improvements made in the surrounding area to provide a great business appearance for this company. Every time I go by there, it's just absolutely immaculate and I want to congratulate Ms. Washington and the owners of the Chick-fil-A here in Jacksonville for all the work they do to make their business presentable here. And we have an award for you.
The Clean Green Jacksonville Star Award, Clean Green Jacksonville Outstanding Business Appearance Award is presented to Chick-fil-A to advocate for purification and appearance efforts at their business, which benefits the Clean Green Jacksonville program presented by Sammy Phillips.
For our residential appearance, award outstanding residential appearance, we are going to recognize the residents of 103 Bethesda Drive here in Jacksonville. This is Mr. and Mrs. Angelo Capano. They were unable to be with us tonight, but we do want to recognize them for having created this beautiful residence, residential yard over here in the Brenmore area. It's, the recognition committee noted that the home has consistently displayed a highly manicured and cultivated look that impresses neighbors and visitors who pass by. Some have even remarked that the appearance of this home is a motivator for others in the neighborhood. And we will make sure that the Capanos get their award delivered to them. Thank you. Thank you all for helping tonight. The next award for tonight, I would like to ask Chief Mike Yanero, who is the Director of Public Safety, along with Captain Ashley Weaver, my favorite captain, who is also the event coordinator for National Night Out. National Night Out brings communities together nationwide to promote police community crime prevention efforts. Tonight, I would like to present this proclamation recognizing the 16th Annual National Night Out here in Jacksonville. It doesn't seem like it's been that many years since we did the first one. Whereas it is essential that the citizens of Jacksonville are aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Jacksonville. And whereas each year, the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program entitled National Night Out. Whereas National Night Out provides a special opportunity for the city of Jacksonville to join forces with thousands of other communities across the nation in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas on August 5, 2014, the Jacksonville Police Department will join forces with these organizations and thousands of communities nationwide to provide this opportunity to the citizens during the Jacksonville 16th Annual National Night Out celebration. And whereas the city of Jacksonville is honored to host such an event that allows citizens to meet with community groups, law enforcement officers, and local officials to discuss neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim Tuesday, August 5, 2014, as National Night Out in the city of Jacksonville and urge all residents to join the Jacksonville Police Department in celebrating the 16th Annual National Night Out in support of crime prevention. And I know that it's a will of a task. And I appreciate your efforts, Ashley, and I'm gonna hand you that and I'll let, you are the chief. You're the one that wants to address the...
Thank you, Mayor. National Night Out, this is our 16th year. It is for all of Jacksonville and Onslow County. It's not just the police department. It's the city of Jacksonville that presents this. It's teamwork between the fire department through Community Development Services, recreation and parks, and all the other city services that put together this event. So I just spearhead it. They are the ones that do all the work. It's Tuesday, August 5. It starts at 5:00 PM downtown in the River World Park, and there's all kinds of events for kids. There's a bicycle giveaway every year, and our goal is to give away 90 bikes this year. We had a large donations from businesses out in the community this year that were able to allow us to provide that opportunity.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. And Ashley, all you captains are my favorite captains, by the way. You've got to be tactful about how I do that, right? Okay. Very excited about National Night Out. That's always a big event here in Jacksonville. And again, like I said, I encourage everybody to come out on Tuesday, the 5th of August. If you haven't been before, you need to experience National Night Out. It gives you a great opportunity to come out and kind of rub elbows with the people that provide public safety in our community and just a great event community-wise. All right, we'll go on to the first item here, number one, on the agenda for tonight, and this is a map amendment for rezoning of RS7, RSF7 to office and industrial at 400 Bay Shore Boulevard. And Abigail Barman, one of our planners, will be presenting this item. So, Abigail, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. We have 400 Bay Shore, which is actually right across the street. It actually includes 400, or four parcels for rezoning today. Like I said, right across the street, literally, City Hall's right there. Just walk out Johnson, it's right over there. The subject parcel here are, there's a church, and then across the street, there's a parking lot, a structure that looks kind of like a residential house, and then there's kind of an odd-shaped bulb at the end. So they're all owned by the First Presbyterian Church, and Parker and Associates submitted an application to rezone these parcels on behalf of the church. Here is looking at the parking lot on the left-hand side of this picture and then the residential structure, which is the reason you see this rezoning tonight. Here is looking at the church, looking towards City Hall there, and then looking away down the street the other way. The future land use designates this as public institutional, which is the green, and then residential low density, which is, not sure what happened there.
That was a quick meeting.
The yellow is residential low density. And we would also recommend that you, that you direct staff to update this, to show all four parcels as the public institutional if this rezoning is approved. And you would see that with the KAMA update that will probably come up in the next couple of months. We have a couple with other rezonings that we need to go ahead and update that for our future land use map. The existing zoning is RSF7, which does allow churches, but it does not allow any kind of office or more commercial, public institutional type use. So the proposal is to rezone it as office and institutional. So that's the pink color you'll see there. And staff recommends approval of this rezoning based on findings of fact A, C, and D being found in the affirmative, with B being the amendment to the future land use, and that it advances the public interest. And Parker and representatives from the church are here to answer any questions you might have about the rezoning.
Now, they don't have to be on the public hearing end, though. They do, okay. All right. So thank you very much, Abigail. At this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting and open a public hearing that's required in this matter. And is there anyone present that wishes to speak? Let me, before we do that, I'm going to state that you are asked to come to the lectern and clearly state your name and address so that the clerk can properly enter it into the record. Each speaker will be allowed only one opportunity to speak, so please organize your thoughts before coming to the podium. We have allotted a maximum time per speaker of no more than five minutes, and we ask, we request that groups designate a spokesman person to address group concerns. And in the interest of time, we ask that if another speaker has already raised a point or addressed your concern, that it not be repeated. And with that said, I'll ask, is there anyone present that wishes to speak at this public hearing? I don't have any takers, so I'm going to close the public hearing in this matter and reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed zoning.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning request based on the findings of fact A, C, and D being found in the affirmative and that the rezoning advances the public interest. And concerning item B, direct the staff to amend the KAMA future land use map with the next biannual update, which will align the proposed rezoning and render the finding of fact B in affirmative.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have item two, which is another map amendment, and this will be a public hearing for rezoning from office and industrial to CC, and this is at 255 Wilmington Highway. Abigail, you got this one, too?
Yep. Another rezoning, just like the similar, similar to the last one. This is located down Wilmington Highway, right next to the DOT office. Lanier Surveying submitted a application to, is it, rezone this from office and institutional to CC Commercial Corridor, which is our new UDO zoning. It was B1 prior to it, so that's why some of the new acronyms, but CC is Commercial Corridor, similar to the B1 district that we had before. Here's an aerial of the site. This is looking at the site. It used to be a restaurant, and they'd like to reopen it as a restaurant, but under the ONI, it's not permitted, which is why this rezoning is coming forth. Across the street, this is on the other side of Wilmington Highway. This is looking towards New River, towards downtown, and this is looking towards the DMV, towards Holly Ridge to the south. The future land use designates this as regional commercial, which the Commercial Corridor zoning is incongruent with this designation for the KAMA. The existing zoning is office and institutional, which is the same zoning that you'll see for the DOT office. And the proposed rezoning is Commercial Corridor. Staff recommends approval of this based on findings of fact A through D being found in the affirmative and that it advances the public interest. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Barman. Thank you, Abigail. At this time, we'll recess the regular council meeting and open a public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak? If so, indicate by raising your hand. I don't have any takers, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and reconvene the council meeting, regular council meeting. And Counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning based on findings of fact A through D being found in the affirmative and that the rezoning will advance the public interest.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have our first session of public comment, and I'm going to go ahead and read this. It's now time for the public comment portion of the agenda. This is a time that council is set aside during each regular meeting to hear comments from the public. This is not a question-and-answer session, but a time for you to express your views on city issues to the council. Each speaker who signed up, or signed the public comment sign-up sheet may come to the podium when I call your name and please state your name and address for the record. You may speak for up to three minutes. When the timer at the podium and also displayed on the screen turns yellow, that is a signal that there is 30 seconds of time remaining, and you may wish to begin wrapping up your comments. And I noticed that during the first session of public comment, I have no one signed up, so we'll come back to the second session shortly, and the same rules apply. Okay. So here, we're going to move on now to, oh, we're going to move on to the appointments of some boards here. We've got number 14 here on the agenda. His appointment's to the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission Board of Directors. And let me pull this up here. I'm getting there. It's automation. Let's see. The bylaws of the Sports Commission Incorporated created by the city of Jacksonville call on the city council to appoint one half the members of the board of directors from recommendations made by the board of directors. I think what we have here is, says... Is there, I don't notice this on this, how many, how many spots are there?
Two.
I'm sorry. I'm just overlooking it. Okay. So...
Mayor, the action that is requested tonight is for you to consider the appointment of two members to the Onslow Sports Commission as the class of 2017. Mike Carter for seat A, Carol McIntyre for seat B.
Okay. All right. It takes me a minute to navigate around this little thing here. A little difficult. So we have those two slots open, and are there any nominations other than what's been listed?
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Mike Carter and Carol McIntyre, and I don't, am I out of order to say I move? We accept them by acclamation. Close the nominations.
You would be fine to do that.
Second.
Yeah, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item number 15, tonight, city representatives to Onwassa and Sura Authority. Onwassa, there are two positions reserved on the Onwassa Board of Directors for members of the Jacksonville City Council. The Onwassa bylaws provide for three staggered terms, and any member may be reappointed by their representative government to subsequent terms. Right now, we have Mayor Pro Tim Lazar, he's, he's been serving on this board. His term started on 16 July 2013, will expire July 31, 2015, and Councilmember Bittner was reappointed to an additional three-year term expiring July 31, 2016. And I think the action of the council was that we reappoint every year. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint.
I nominate Mayor Pro Tim Michael Lazar and Mr. Jerry Bittner for reappointment for the duration of those existing terms, or for, just for reappointment.
Mayor Phillips, I move that the nominations be closed and the candidates, candidates be accepted by acclamation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Now we come to our last session of public comment for the evening, and I have one person that has signed up, Mr. David Williams.
Yes, hello. David Williams, 109 Chatterbrook Drive. I'm going to just throw this out there and see where it goes. Recently, the majority of both our county commissioners and the Jacksonville City Council have voted for massive property tax increases. A large part of this was due to the decrease in property values in our area. This was caused by having too many homes on the market and not enough people wanting them. Unless the federal government shuts down military bases outside our area and bring the troops here, or if we have another long-term war, this situation is sure to continue. On the private side of it, our efforts to bring in industry to the area has not been able to make up the difference in this shortfall of citizens needing homes. Therefore, what can we do? What would happen to Jacksonville and the county of Onslow if you both received permission from the state to change your property tax laws, or rules? If you both were to make the rule that if someone were to pay off their primary home, not owing anything to anyone, you both in turn would guarantee that this city and county government would never... government would never take their home for property taxes owed? How would you do this and still get their money? They still would be responsible to pay their property tax. However, their paid-off home would no longer be held as collateral. That responsibility would be connected to the total household income only. The lower the income, the lower the tax, up to and including no tax at all. I believe this would interest people to come both to Jacksonville and Onslow County to live. Citizens that do not have house payments would in turn, I believe, use that excess money mainly in our local economy. Therefore, more sales tax for the city and the county. True owner, true home ownership is very important to many of our citizens. It is time we give our North Carolina citizens that kind of opportunity. After all, they worked for it, and therefore, in my opinion, they deserve it. And what is it? The American dream, the American dream of truly owning their own home. Thank you.
That brings us to our reports for the evening, and I will start with Mr. Warden over here.
I don't know that I have a report, but I appreciate you coming tonight and expressing your thoughts. We certainly don't have every idea that's a good idea, and that's why we rely on the citizens. So again, thank you for taking your time and being with us tonight, so, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I had wondered whether or not you'd moved away. Haven't seen you in a while. It's good, good to see you. Good to see you, David.
No report. Thank you.
Yes, a few items. First of all, thank you for the continuing appointment to Onwassa. Pledge that I continue to try to bring to you the major items of interest that Onwassa is pursuing that affect the city. And also, there, there sometimes there's things going on in Onwassa that affect more of the operational needs, and I communicate and provide that information to the manager so he and his staff can follow up on that. For example, recently, the major project between the city and Onwassa for construction of a sewer line on Pine and Green ran into some contractor problems with the, as they were checking the final line, they found some pluggages. I forward that information to the manager, so we would be up and abreast of that. The other thing I want to report on is that Onwassa has a groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for August 7th at 10:00 AM at the Burton Park to commemorate the start of the construction of the Onslow West Sewer Line, which will replace the sewer service Jacksonville's been providing to the Burton Park. And that line will open up sewer service along Highway 258 all the way up to the site of the new Northwest Regional Treatment Plant. So again, that dedication ceremony, groundbreaking, is August 7th, Thursday at 10:00 AM at the Burton Park. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Willingham?
Thank you. HUD monitors were on-site today for, that's Housing and Urban Development, federal government from Greensboro to monitor our CD program. The CD director was in good spirits, so I don't think there's anything to worry about with the community development program. Parks and Recreation on Monday night will unveil their discussion and suggestions, if you will, on the Let's Move program. We asked them to see what they could come up with for the fitness and nutrition education program sponsored by the federal government. Went by Jack Amyette today, and there's substantial progress on the baseball field. It's coming along. And Kerr Street, in spite of the rain, looks like they got a lot of work done on the baseball field and the fence that they're putting up so we can have competitive play at Kerr Street. Lastly, the Chamber and the city have been nice enough to honor Tyrone Willingham with a marker on the African-American Heritage Trail. That will happen on August 1st at 3:00 PM, and everyone is invited to attend. Tyrone will be there with his wife, Kim. Nothing further.
Dr. Will.
Mayor and Council, as a follow-up, that ceremony will be, as Mr. Willingham said, Friday, August 1st at 3:00 PM at the Kerr Street Recreation Center. Certainly, we encourage the public. Several items. Number one, we've already mentioned National Night Out. We would remind the public that we provide shuttle service. There will be newspaper ads that show where the shuttles will be operating. Ron, would you mind refreshing my memory on what those are gonna be?
Normally, in New River, we use the parking lot of Pigly Wiggly, and there's a shuttle bus that runs from there. It stops to pick up parkers at City Hall, and the hospital complex, county hospital, and also the other route, parking over on Court Street, adjacent to the Public Justice Complex, and cross the street from the new Public Safety Building, and that runs down to Riverwalk Park, both the shuttles do.
And those shuttles will be running continuously, even though the event lasts four hours or so. It's a come and go, you know, people flow in and flow out. So you can, you can get here, you can ride the shuttle down, or you can park in the general area, but you should be aware you're going to have difficulty parking fairly close to the park. But we encourage the folks to come out. Because of National Night Out, our next city council meeting will occur on a Wednesday evening instead of the normal Tuesday evening. So that will be Wednesday, August 6th. The other thing that we would mention is this past weekend, we had a basketball tournament here in the community. It's the annual tournament. You will recall, four years ago, you as a council discussed the capital improvement project as to what you should do with the gym floor at the Commons. I can tell you that that floor is holding up extremely well. It was a, what I guess, for lack of a better term, it's a composite floor, more of a rubberized material that has held up extremely well. I will tell you, we had 24 teams from around the state here, and the economic impact to that was significant. Most of those teams actually spent the night in local hotels rather than driving back and forth. Very good investment on your part. And beyond that, as always, Mayor and Council, we appreciate the leadership and guidance that you're giving to this city. Thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Carter?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.